What was the problem that the adjustment really was here and this was happening in the show?
They didn't tell me. Didn't say anything.
Did they call you?
No.
I was told that it took them seven minutes to.
They're even tempted.
Getting zoom going.
You know, it doesn't clearly tell you that you're on your live on YouTube. When you're like clicks on it and then you have to go back and then look, yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to go back and see that.
It's when it starts spinning then.
And for you, Jared. The man.
Alright, you are.
Standing down protection. Unfitted.
Ready? All right, welcome everybody to Tuesday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty three. It is six oh three. We're here to approve and sign the annual town meeting warrant for town meeting June tenth. So I'll hand it over to the board. You have any questions, comments, corrections? You have the new updated one in front of you. And then includes all corrections that were sort of. Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, so we do have. I don't know where they went. The ordinance papers to to sign just for the clerk, that's just a clerical thing. The article.
Well, question.
Yeah, that the that table got fixed. And then Article fifty six.
Yeah.
And. I thank you to Marjorie for helping us with that. Article fifty six, the thirteen thousand, it said ten thousand in the actual. Yeah, more article, but we were requesting thirteen, so we changed that. Plus, the the actual where it was coming out of the. The budget number was not in there. We could write it that. Besides that, I didn't.
The only thing I haven't done is double and triple check the school numbers, that they look correct.
The school numbers were provided by Ann and we went to the school attorney and. Came back from the school attorney, put it here, and then Natalie actually had a comment on one or two things, and then Marjorie looked at it too. And then from my understanding, you know, was that the office would be there.
Okay, and Chris went over line by line and Jenny. Yeah, it went line by line through the numbers and verified the numbers.
Great.
Sorry, I'm a little confused which version we're operating on.
The the one that was on the table.
So that, but isn't it? Not June fourteenth, it's June thirteenth.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So the one, this one is the old one?
Yeah.
So I looked at.
Yeah, get rid of all the old ones. Uh, we did do the corrections on it. We did add Article.
Fifty.
The fifteen.
Fifty-six, the one that you would.
Fifty-six we corrected, uh, but there was one that we added to the school.
Yeah.
Uh, the twenty-eight thousand dollar.
Also means to to the transfer.
Yeah. Alright, thanks. Yes.
So what what number is it, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
No, not twenty.
Article twenty-one on page thirty.
Twenty, yeah.
To override the brand number.
Wrong word.
To offset.
Yeah, twenty-one is the one that we added. Yeah. Got it.
What does that mean, the school department's general fund? What's the general fund?
Um, that's like the um, undesignated fund balance, so it's to offset the taxes.
I, yeah, okay.
There's a just called different than our.
It's just the way that the description.
But it's going in. Showing up as revenue.
It's gonna show up, yeah, yeah.
So besides that table, Carol. Article fifty-six got changed, that. The numbers got matched and then the.
Right.
The budget number got put into the budget. Whatever you want to call that, we call that.
The department one.
Please.
Here and above, what's that money is for?
Yeah.
Just another quick general question. Are we all happy in our opinions with the? Any description changes of the? Preserve capital funds?
No. No.
Didn't we change ninety-one, ninety-five Indian Island? Does that, does that change the description in our opinion?
So that's the description that you had mentioned to me at a meeting.
Yeah.
Early on in the process, yeah.
So just asking if we're. Happy with what we've got there on this table. Go ahead, Carol.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I know people, I mean, I just haven't had a chance to look at that, they still do again, but. I do have a couple of questions and then I do feel like somehow we need to acknowledge the ones that we've changed at town meeting.
That's kind of my point, I think.
I think we can't just particularly. Uh, Indian Island, the the ones that we really changed were Indian Island, the town facilities. Uh, we've included renovations, so I think we need to acknowledge that since we're planning to do that. And then we've had, well, anyway, we can go through them. I don't know how you want to do it, but I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
So go ahead. Okay, so starting on page nine.
Okay.
School capital use for the overall improvement of the school, is that facilities of the school? I mean, is that a definition from the school that you're using?
The the education ones, the school board, um. And the superintendent worked on coming up with these and they actually met over two different um. Meetings to come up with the descriptions that they saw were appropriate to.
Okay, well, it's not my purview then, but it seems funny to say additional money to Yarmouth. Middle and high school instead of tuition money, for example, for ninety-one, thirty-two. But it it's up to them, I guess. They don't, we don't need to improve those as part of town meeting because those can be changed by the school committee, correct? Alright.
They're a reserve account, just like, um.
Yeah, so they, when we, when I was on the school committee, we would set them up, approve them at the school committee meeting. We could make appropriations at the school committee meeting. It doesn't need town meeting approval, is that right? Yeah, so they don't necessarily need to be on here. Just so you know, but I I the the only one that I really had a hang up about was ninety-one, thirty-two because it seems like we should have tuition in there.
So the school board doesn't have to have.
Town meeting.
A town meeting approval to change the wording or the use of that money?
I don't know. They certainly didn't need it to set them up. We set them up as the school committee. So I would assume that the wording. But I I mean, we can just leave it. If they're happy with it, I'm not gonna. So I guess going through the accounts. On ninety-sixty, we're gonna keep the harbor mess harbor master vessel account. Is that right?
I'm sorry, what one is that?
Uh, previous page, I'm feeling ninety-sixty. I'm just checking to make sure we're keeping that.
Right now.
Okay. Then on the next page, ninety-one teen. The thing we added was the Stonewalk Road. So I guess I wasn't clear, is that parking on the Stonewalk Road or? Stonewalk Road, I mean, we're we're including. That's the new addition, right?
There's more parking above it.
To to me, if I may answer from my perspective, to me, that's saying to the voters and the people of Chavig. That that reserve account could be used to do a capital improvement to the Stonewalk Road. As well as the Stonewalk itself. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, and so I do think if I was gonna do, I mean, maybe there's no requirement, but it seems like. You know, we could have done, you know, Anne Stonewalk Road at the end in red or something, just but whatever. I I think we need to let the public know that on ninety-fifteen, we added. Stonewalk Road as a cap, and maybe that's in our verbal description at the meeting. So that's that's the only one. I'm just checking that is the change we made, right? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Then moving down on ninety-fifty. I think I would call, we, I was thinking we could just call that roads. Um, because we may be doing more, you know, things other than paving if we tackle the gravel roads. And then I would just delete that second sentence, a plan to bring the condition of all paved roads to maintenance or better status. Because we had in there, there is a ten-year plan.
Yes.
But we completed that ten-year plan. So if it was me, I think I'd just keep it simple, call it roads. And then leave the description the way you have it, but eliminate that last sentence. Because it's kind of confusing.
Starting with a plan?
Yeah, I I think that was originally in there because there was a ten-year paving plan, which we have completed.
Well, we have.
Engineering capital maintenance.
Almost. It'll be fifteen years we haven't completed it.
Well, we're close, but I mean, it was referring to that plan and I think instead of taking out, I think it's confusing to leave it in there.
So you'd want just so the description to be roads instead of paving and just the first sentence.
I thought roads, if we go to gravel roads, then we don't have to, then people understand it. If we're gonna change it, now's the time, is what I was thinking.
So is anybody? Is everybody in agreement? Is that an easy fix that doesn't have to?
If you guys are able to, yeah.
Approve with the changes.
Tonight, depending on these changes, it's just a matter of deleting that. The only thing is you'll have to come into the office to sign it.
Wouldn't that be?
Uh, I would suggest that, because tomorrow has to be the last day. Tomorrow we have to post. In order for it to be posted as approved, so I can make these changes first in the morning. If you comment like after ten AM or nine AM. Inside this, and then we can print it.
It's up to you guys.
But let's change it, but I just, I'm leaving Thursday morning. I'm leaving tomorrow morning. So.
The other option is you can sign it tonight and we can make these changes and post.
Yeah.
I think that's the similar way.
Those are a big change in the script there.
Yeah. Okay, so we're adding it. We're make changing paving to road. And then roads. And then dropping, eliminating a plan to bring the condition of all paved roads to maintenance and better status. Like.
Okay.
Could I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
So. Were you insinuating that paving was related to dirt roads? No, or did I misunderstand?
I was saying that if we go to dirt roads, paving might seem a little confusing, so I thought if we just said roads. If we move on to gravel roads, it's, there's no confusion. It's roads.
Okay.
Could even be public roads, whatever.
Yeah.
Then, uh, moving down to. Uh, ninety-thirty-one.
Yeah.
That's the one where we've added, what you've added to this one is or improved the existing one. And I would say. A reserve fund to build a new town office or renovate the existing one. I mean, or something, because I think that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I think we, yeah, that's the other, that's the other one. I think we have to be kind of upfront with the community that we're expanding that definition.
Do you want me to read? The the changes and print it out in color so that people see?
Well, that that's the way, for for example, that's the way I assume the land use ordinances are going, because it's sort of required that you do it that way.
The ordinances, yeah, they have things that are written and things like that.
But you could even do it in black and white. It doesn't have to be in red. You can do, you know, you, because if anybody has questions during town meeting, we can just.
Because in the, in the past, it's only been, you know, like one or two changes, so we were able to put it kind of under a tab underneath both of this because you guys wanted the whole thing adopted.
I agree, or maybe you put it in italics, the new additions or something. That might be one way to, whatever you think is right, I just think we should. Kind of be very upfront about it, so people don't feel like they got.
Whatever, simply. It's easier to put just a red in red and.
Well, then we have the branding.
If we're printing a hundred copies in red, that costs more money.
I would put it, I would put it italics, yeah. And then we can just explain that. Then I I'm just gonna ask this, I know this, like, everybody wants to get out of here, but ninety-fifty-seven. Is there a reason why that's a separate? Account than building facilities, which now includes, you know, transfer station? I mean, do we need to have, is there any benefit to combining those or anything?
I think the reason that it started out as a separate category from. Facilities maintenance is that we actually replaced. Two to three of the old existing compacted up there and it stayed in, and that's how it just stayed in there on that, so.
So I mean, do we need it as a separate account? I was trying to give you sort of more flexibility. You know.
I I would leave, I guess, for now. It's kind of late in the beginning to be making.
Okay.
Let's continue.
Then, uh, the some material perpetual care, that's a town account?
So it, the, excuse me, there are. It is. And it is on the Machai of Savings Bank. Uh, it's never been present in recent years under trio count. And it does impact the overall number, and so I. Thought that for the sake of transparency, it would be helpful to have it in there, just because that way you're not explaining. You know, where the difference is.
And I I agree with that. Is there any need to give it a number, an account number?
So these numbers are the trio numbers that we would use, so if we had to do, uh, like there's actually in the current year. Um, there is a recommendation that Ann recently made about some perpetual care of some tree work because. It was due to a storm that they found, and so we would need that trio account number. So these numbers to the left are designated to what the accounting number would be used.
Okay, so this is the money people pay in to have their families. You know, graves taken care of.
Yeah, and then money, as far as I've been in the office, we haven't had to really change that money, but with this unexpected expense. Um, this cemetery has asked them to do so.
So. Okay, that's fine. So ninety-thirty-four. I didn't quite understand what that is for. Is it for? Maintenance of the town infrastructure? Is it for purchase of the town infrastructure? I I didn't quite.
That is a description that was voted on a couple of town meetings ago, and. Um, that's what I put it in, but to date, what they've used it on has been some. Insurance costs and a few other things that have come up. There was sixty thousand dollars in it, so to date, to date, some of the money that has come out was for legal fees, and then there's been some.
So could it, could it just, I guess, you could say costs related to town ownership? I mean, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I think, I think it was, I think you're right, Viga. They've used it for some miscellaneous upfront costs, and I think that's exactly why it was started.
And the money that.
Some of those were not easy to identify.
Okay.
The money that this dentist account will need to be used for the principal and interest, and then. When coming this year to cover the cost of the bond bank before the payment come in.
Okay, and then the only other one, I had a question. Well, the only other one was Indian Island ninety-one, ninety-five, so again, just put that. You know, in a tab. And then you took off the Cousins Wharf Reserve because we don't have that account, is that why?
So the cousin, correct. So I looked back a few years and there was a town meeting warrant article. Um, in some, I think it was within the last five years where it was a town vote to remove that one. But then coastal access fund was kind of the replacement, so one year those accounts will be moved. In funds. So that's why the other one got removed.
So, no, I think the ninety, the ninety-one-ten, which was in the capital plan, the old capital plan was the.
Big escrow account.
Yeah, it's the escrow account for for the cousins, you know, the the Yarmouth side. And I I just want to be sure I understand. You took it off because it's not a fund we retain.
I took it off, so. So there's the Cousins Island Park and Reserve again.
Right.
Ninety-one, ninety-eight, that's the account that that money goes into.
Which I had a question about that. Because if it says that it's funded annually at two thousand dollars, but we don't have anything, the two thousand dollars in there.
Um, so a CTC gives us money every year, and with the two thousand dollars, it's from CTC and then we put it in stuff.
Yeah, but there also was a ninety-one-ten Cousins Island Wharf with a balance of two hundred and seventy-seven, nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That was listed in the capital plan. So, and that is not in this one?
Correct.
Right. And that's because it's not our account?
Um, I, my understanding is that account was created to do some work on Cousins Island, and once it was done. It disappeared, but there was, there was in a a warrant article a few years ago that eliminated that article. And changed it to coastal access.
Really? Okay.
And so then there was, there was the Stonewar account. And then the Cousins Island account was nerded the coastal access fund.
So we don't have, we don't give, we don't, the only money we put.
We give money to, we give money to Yarmouth.
Yep.
But that's through the regular budget, not the road reserve.
Okay.
It's the twenty-fourth foundation.
One in the same.
I'm sorry, what? What what department would that be in, in the, in the operational?
Hold on, let me.
I I should remember that.
Well, yeah.
You're talking about the big escrow account held by Yarmouth through the state taking of the.
Right, that's what.
Cousins Island, which is well up over three hundred.
Yeah, so that's the the same account, but I think what Viga's saying is that we don't maintain that account, so you're taking it off the capital.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's helping me, helping us remember where we make that contribution of a boat.
Yeah. Yeah, we do, we make, we make that.
Isn't like fifty, fifteen and twenty thousand dollars there? The Yarmouth has been like eight. So the state, you know, set that up.
But where, where is the money? Yarmouth hasn't an account?
Yes.
Send it to Yarmouth every year.
Okay.
And then they give us a report.
Miscellaneous meaning. Uh, forty-four hundred, nine one one oh, twenty-three.
Right.
Thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, so we have a string. Amounts that we're required to pay, and we send it to Yarmouth.
And the only reason I'm asking because, because in the capital plan, it's listed, and it says here account balances from the twenty-nineteen statement, but I think that is the same. Account, and maybe we just got the balance from Yarmouth to put it in here or something, possibly. Okay.
And do you think that we have been getting an annual update of the status of that? That that reserve escrow account for. Replacement and stuff over there. Do you think we've been getting a report from Yarmouth?
I haven't seen one.
Okay.
Okay.
I I would, I would encourage you to consider asking Matt Tupper that question, because we're supposed to just get a quick update of, you know, the status is.
Yeah.
Three hundred something dollars.
I just.
As of though, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Alright. Anybody else? Danny, still anything?
I had a couple of really simple questions. Article sixty-four is a standard. Different kind of a book, they have a candidate forum here and now, and. Did I hear that there's also gonna be a candidate's night?
Yes. That's organized by.
Okay.
Island Council.
So the only reason I'm asking these questions is the candidate's night. Are we being competitive with this and? Just leave it, leave it in.
Well, different candidates nights only listing the selectmen, so this would be an opportunity for school committee.
Right.
Oh, it's only listing select.
Right.
Like what?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is always like traditional, so.
So I believe it.
And then will there be a mailing of of this, a small version of this to people or on the island?
Um, in the time I've worked in the office, we have not mailed the warrant out to people. We do make a hundred club copies of it.
And bring them.
Available about a week. So what we'll do is, once this is approved, we'll post it. There's like seven different places that we're required to post it on, and then we print out a bunch of copies, and then. Um, we have it advertised on the website that it's available, and then people can come and pick them up and then we bring it to a meeting.
Yeah, just in case somebody asks, oh, but they could also.
We, yeah, we could do, we could do a text.
There are plenty of people now that it's available.
But it's also on the website.
It will be once, yeah, so there is, this version is on the website under Trevor, where, you know, history or thirty-four budget pages, it's not available. Uh, just, well, you had the question, or while you were talking about the forum. Because the Island Institute is doing the, you know, the selectmen's candidate forum. Uh, if there's three of you or more that are planning to be there.
The Institute?
Yes, I'm sorry. We would technically have to advertise it, so I don't know.
If we're attending as attendees?
Yep.
If there's three of you are gonna be present, especially if you're gonna be commenting on anything, it is technically considered a.
I would think if we weren't commenting, we wouldn't ask you. I I'm not, neither. I'm gonna be gone.
I wasn't planning on being there either.
There you are.
Oh.
I had no value.
They like the surprise.
Well, I, I. I think that would be a good one, if there were three, you know, three selectmen, and if it's. Candidates talking about it, just to keep ourselves covered.
Yep.
I do have one more question, if I may. Page seven, Article thirty-nine. You see whether the town authorized the additional donation of municipal employee time. And materials for the occasional snow plowing and sanding. Of the parking lots of the Chavig Rex Center and Townes Co. Wharf. Is this new?
No, it's been in every town the last few years, so I just copied the previous year and.
Okay.
Make the notice there are changes.
I I guess I wish that it. It said the commons, because.
Yeah.
They've been sending the commons, and I don't have a problem with that as long as we're being. Transparent with with everything, but that's just me.
Why don't we just add the word the commons in there? Simplest, man.
But I mean, if the commons were, then we had to stop and then we.
Well.
The difference.
I'm not suggesting throwing it becomes, I'm just asking, I don't care if you put it in there for this year. I'm just asking, I don't have a problem with us helping that facility with backing in, sanding and pulling out. If that's what we intend to do. I'm asking, do we want to put it in here? Do we need to put it in here, or do we not deal with it right now? That's my question.
I think we just leave it alone for now. That's my comment.
Yeah.
I, I have the other opinion. You should be in there. Cause, you know. Urgency vehicles going there during the winter and stuff.
Well, that's my point. My point is I don't have a problem with. Physical activity. I don't think we should be plowing everywhere unless we're gonna talk to our insurance company and get back into the business. But I don't think we are. I'm just saying. They're likely going to continue sanding and soldering. We have a problem with it not being transparent. That's my problem, or, or in here.
I don't see, I don't see what it would hurt just to add Island Commons in it. I agree.
So should they directly use the center Chandler's War and Island Commons, don't significant wonder. Whether it does.
The only, the only problem is it says plowing and sanding. I don't think we intend to plow at the commons. Do we?
What if you do?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Very good. Problem solved. Thank you.
They don't.
They do sand it.
Okay. Well, we can fix it later, it's good enough. I don't think they allow the lot either.
Well, this is just allowing them in the rare.
It's not a committee, it's something, yeah, I get you. We have a flubbered start.
They plow the school consistently, don't they?
Yeah.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, so by approving this, we're approving the ordinance changes also. Uh, which is article. Four, five, six, and seven. Uh.
We're not, we're approving.
Sending it.
That, the voters.
Correct, yes.
And do we have a copy of that?
Yes, it was on the table. I don't know where it went.
Do we have a copy in the ordinance?
Not, not with us, but we had a copy here to sign, so.
These were the changes that, um, were held. At the, um.
The public.
Here, yes, yeah.
So those will go on the website, cause they should accommodate.
They're already.
Yeah, okay, but they should go with the warrant, so people know, right?
We will have, so we had a copy in the town office since the hearing, there have been a website and I do have copies. And we'll have, uh, a couple, I'm not gonna print out the same amount, I'm gonna save your books at the front.
So go to the ones to sign.
But, yeah, so, but once you guys approve this, uh, I'll have you guys sign.
Yeah.
So, so there'll just be a few copies of those available at the town meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Alright, based after our discussion, we need a motion to approve the town warrant. Uh, with the corrections.
So, uh, I move that we approve the town warrant for the. Uh, June tenth, twenty twenty three town meeting with the discussed. Uh, changes.
Right. Right, any comments? Anything, Big?
Yeah.
Alright. Oh, favor? Oh, most. Didn't see your head again, sorry. I'll back this down the line.
I'll stand over here.
I'll wait for everybody to sign it. Our next meeting is June seventh. I will not be there. Nice.
Bob, we never adopted this time?
We, we moved it in a town meeting, but we never did anything official.
We went to a town meeting, but from hearing and the steps prior were not taken and so.
What year?
I'm surprised the candidate's night is, um, not both entities.
I know, I don't know if they thought about. It seems like it makes sense.
Yeah, they called the speakers that you guys had done it because we've done it since you guys want these in. Before we all be. And you settle check to make sure we're.
I mean, I'm sure they.
We got every signature that we need.
Yes.
On everything, please. Looking to you, alright. Who we here, please? Alright, all favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you.